Call meeting to order, the pledge of allegiance. Uh...I'm good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I always want to say amen.
He'll say play ball. That's what she says.
Roll call, everybody's here. Yeah, we've got, um, both Kenley and Sandy by phone conference. Uh, is there a motion to move the agenda?
So move second.
Do you have to change something?
Yes.
There is an item on the under consent agenda. It's the extracurricular Megan Waller will be assistant track coach, not assistant girls' track, not assistant girls' basketball. So we just make that change.
Move to approve the agenda with that change.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 No public comment tonight? Is there a, um, motion to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes of the December time regular board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Communications, Dave. Okay, we have a number of donations and I'll go through them quickly. You can take one motion to approve all. Performing Arts for Youth Fund within the community foundation. That's the fund that brings the musical, opera, shows and things like that to the school district. This year will be two musicians from the, uh, from a band in Oshkosh come out. They're trained musicians. They're going to come to the Chain of Lakes Elementary School and put on a performance for them, getting a hundred dollars for, from the community foundation. The school will put in a hundred dollars. Tim and Joy Neville donated a Yamaha Klavanova. And it's just a, not just, it's an electric piano on steroids. It's a really nice piece of equipment. They worked with Mr. Wolfgram and on what the needs were. That and a Dolly value at almost fourteen thousand dollars. We have a donated vehicle from Dave Larson and Julie Idon. The Christmas 2013 report, you saw in the packet all the donations that were made by community members and school groups and school employees for needy children. That's a very nice, nice thing to have and there's some nice donations within that. We have Wood Valley at seventy-five dollars donated by Dave Benjwall. Little Motors, you remember the Ram truck fundraiser? They gave the district a check for two thousand and twenty dollars from that fundraiser. Thanks to all those who drove a truck. And then annually we get a donation from Janet Arney and Matthew Jenke, a thousand dollars to the elementary libraries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve on the donation appreciation.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 School board visits. Anyone?
That was supposed to be today.
So we're up in the middle of your zero.
It's on my game plan.
Sandy, are you still there? Are you hearing at all? Okay, all right, good.
I made two visits. My first was at the chain school. It was just before Christmas and a couple of the classes were making gingerbread houses on the gram crackers. I wanted to decorate it with sprinkles and milk drops and frosting. This will help the gram crackers together. So I observed that for a little while and then I decided I better get out of there before the sugar high started because as they were piecing these together, you can see all the frosting on their hands and it wasn't necessarily staying on their hands for long. But then I went into a class in which they were working on math. Their main focus was addition, subtraction of shapes. And they gave me the opportunity to ask them some questions and they showed some of the posters and aids they had on the walls and how they figured various things out. The kids were really seemed quite excited. In taking a survey, without a doubt, addition was our favorite. Until I said I really liked shapes and then half of them reloaded that way. After that, I went to the WLC. Spent some time in reading class in which they were reviewing a book they had been reading in advance and taking some read-up points or test read-up points. Very interactive. He's in the whiteboard and trying to go through various questions about the various characters in the book. And then they would point to a certain spot on the whiteboard and it would transfer over to whether or not that was the correct answer and everything. And the whiteboard always still amazes me, but, um, again, as you could imagine, from the visits that you've made, there were some that had their hands up the entire time wanting to run up there and the teacher on occasion would ask those if they seemed quite as excited to go up. But clearly they all did have a pretty good grasp of the book. Then I spent some time in the library where the librarian was talking to a class of the various books that we would have access to and then called them up individually so that they could make their selection of what book they wanted to take out and for reserve if somebody already had it out. Their patience in there was just amazing. We were talking a little bit before the meeting about the patience of teachers and that we have to go to the library because these are all certainly. And then I watched the gym class for a little while and they were building snowmen using those little carts that they brought in. I've seen those before. Wiggle carts or whatever you call them.
But building snowmen?
Yeah, they'd have to go to the other end and pick up a piece of the snowman and bring it back to the other end and then put the carts and ice and everything. Thinking of looking to see if I can find any of those carts in adult size because they actually look like a lot of fun, but considering the weather, I'll just leave that down. Those are my two carters.
Can you bring those carts next time?
We can.
Aren't those the carts that we said weren't going to be used anymore?
Those little red things?
No, these ones are blue.
The scootery things?
Yeah.
Flying turtles?
Yeah.
Is that what they are? You have to kind of...
Must be different ones where kids knock your teeth out.
I'll have to check.
Really?
Anybody else visit? Spring election candidates, Patrick Behr, Emily Hudson and Steven Johnson. The order has not been selected yet as far as I know, but there will be a drawing onto the app to term the ballot order and there will be...
There will be something available.
Okay, tell me when it was going to be and you can go there and witness it if I think that's...
I was saying that this was the resulting drawing.
Oh, so there is a... The drawing was held already?
That's what I understand from that letter.
What's the order?
Do you remember the order?
There were three people.
Were you one, two or three?
I believe I was one. I believe Kenley was two. I believe Adam was three.
I will confirm that. Okay, then the next item is a teacher handbook updater edition. The handbook is silent on practice that's been in the district through the old contract and that was compensating teachers who give up their preparation time by, uh, to take another teacher's class. Let's say we can't get a sub for half a day, so a teacher volunteers to take somebody else's class, they would get twenty dollars for that class. Mr. Raoul brought a concern to me earlier this year saying at middle school, we may have some teachers who take a class for fifteen minutes and we may have other teachers taking a class for ten minutes because of the length of the classes they carry over. So there was a little inequity in how people were being compensated for taking classes. I shouldn't say, it was probably twenty minutes was the minimum, around there. So he suggested a plan that would pay teachers based on a ten-minute increment. And that's what this says. The language, teachers assigned responsibility during the prep time fulfills that for at least forty minutes, well, less than sixty, will be compensated at the twenty dollars. That's the majority of teachers in the district from elementary through high school. There are some instances at middle school where the second clause of this would be applied and that's a preparation time less than forty minutes or more than sixty minutes will be compensated at four dollars and fifty cents per ten-minute increment. Mr. Roma, have you had that discussion with your staff yet?
I have not yet.
Okay.
Maybe for tomorrow.
But the general's feeling is that it will be well-accepted. That's something that's needed just because of those scheduling.
It'll just make it easier for everybody to understand because right now most of them take a chunk of thirty minutes, but there are some who take fifteen minutes and then they can save it up. Let's just make it easier.
Sorry to ask for approval of adding that to the handbook.
So move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Recognition, Dressford Cause Middle School fundraiser. Five hundred and some dollars, five hundred and forty-seven, I think?
Yeah.
I know, I've got it right here. Five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. The money is distributed to, between Red Basket, this, the Christmas donations you saw before, going to some needy students, and there's a third one.
Miracle Tree.
Miracle Tree.
Do we have a picture?
It's on Facebook, yes.
When did you wear that?
December thirteenth. That looked good.
With stockings?
Uh, no, I wore my, I thought of Miss Herb because I wore my dress robbers, my cowboy boots for the occasion because it was a black dress and they're black boots, so I figured it had to look well.
Oh, it's huge.
And then I had a little scarf as well, so. I was not the most comfortable guy on a cold day, but, uh...
Neither are we.
I can appreciate that much more now.
Picture of him recently dressed up?
Was it school-related?
I think so. No, weren't you dressed up for something else?
No, I got a pie in the face.
For?
On the third.
Because?
That was for Hoops Per Heart. The kids who raised the most money could throw pie in my face as well as Mr. Crystal's face. And so we got apple pies in my face.
Okay.
We should have gone for cream pie.
Congratulations.
Well, the cream was on top, but apple's my favorite pie, so.
Oh, okay. And we also have recognition for high school fall sports. That list of student athletes and coaches is in the packet that are posted online. Congratulations to all those.
Um, can I just say something quick too? I won't know all the statistics and everything, but I just want to mention about Brock Jensen and his winningest quarterback at North Dakota State University and all the Wapaka fans who traveled around to see him and even down to Texas. It's just incredible. And just a truly nice guy. My gosh, when he would come back to Wapaka, just so down-to-earth, so friendly. Yeah, just a great guy.
Good for him. I watched the game as well. Unfortunately, they cut off the television coverage before the awards ceremony after the game.
Yeah.
But I understand he was the most valuable player. Is that...
Yeah, this, that's his third year in a row that he was MVP. And they won the national championship three years in a row. Player of the competition.
You're talking about people following it, which they obviously do. I was working a youth basketball tournament at the high school the day that they were playing and someone from one of the out-of-town teams, one of the coaches came over and said, "Where can we go for something deep that has a television?" So, "Well, maybe a couple places," and they said, "Because we want to watch the South Dakota game." And that has that Brock Jensen from Wapaka, right? And I said, "Yeah," so, you know, there were even some other people beyond our borders that were very interested.
Well, and some of the stories they told is people from Wapaka who went out to North Dakota to wherever the school is, that if they mentioned that they were from Wapaka when they were, you know, getting a hotel room, it was just like they were celebrities out there, just because they think so highly of Brock. Yeah, quite a deal.
He announced on TV that his brother is signed there, going there also as a tight end?
No, he was his brother.
No, Nate Jensen.
But they announced it as his brother.
He knows his brother.
Yeah.
Oh, but it's on the...okay.
No, Nate Jensen.
Yeah.
No, not his brother.
But they announced it as his brother.
Yeah, okay, okay. I don't think he has a brother, though. No, just a sister.
Thank you notes, there are another, they do this annually. Mr. Terry Stoltz and his students sent Christmas cards to veterans. The Veterans Association sent thank you notes back to Mr. Stoltz and they are posted online as well. Congratulations and thank you to Mr. Stoltz for doing that again. And then thank you note from the family of Ralph Cutting. Ralph Cutting was, I believe, Deanna Steinmaiden's father, passed away and the board made a donation to the Scholarship Foundation. Under administrator, future dates, February eleventh will be the regular board meeting at 5:45 PM. And then we have a, I would ask the board, DPI, the legislature has said that there's some concern about districts that are saying, "We won't accept open enrollment students anymore because we're full." So the legislature said, "Okay, then you're going to have to say how many slots you have for open enrolled students at each grade level and announce that annually to the legislature." So I have to fill out a survey. Those who do not limit open enrollment for regular education students have to declare that as well. So I'm asking the board to approve the motion or the language that's on the screen. School District Wapaka does not intend to limit open enrollment spaces for regular education students for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Brings us to monitoring. There are two topics here. The first one was update on the four-year-old kindergarten program. And we have had several meetings and I'm going to give the presentation, but I'm going to give the credit to Rhonda Heer and Ray Markon who arranged the meetings, invited participants and put together this presentation. I allow both of them to leave. Tonight because of travel, so. I just want to go, first of all, it has a name. It is called W4K. That's Wapaka Four-Year-Old Kindergarten. Just a way to recognize him to put it in writing without spelling it all out. Number of committee members, you can see the names on the first page and the schools are organized, daycare centers, organizations they've represented to the meeting. There's an advisory committee that'll be making decisions as to which daycare centers will be selected as sites. They have a mission on page three. Their goals and beliefs, these were gone over with the committee members at the meetings. That's what they came up with. And then guiding framework, which says what, what they will do as four-year-old kindergarten programs. It's my understanding that right now we have about, Carl, I'll be five sites? That said that they're interested?
I have four, but they...
Four, okay. Four sites, you said they're interested in offering a program at their site. Most of them hire a certified 4K teacher, so we will be reimbursing them or compensating them for their teacher, not hiring one of our own to put there for the time that they they put in. If we have overflow, we will have the, a site at the learning center and possibly a site at Chain of Lakes School as well. I remember one site can hold two programs, a morning program and an afternoon program. So one teacher, you may have ten classrooms, but that's five teachers. We are anticipating there will be about approximately a hundred and forty students participating the first year. The general trend has been ninety percent of your eligible population is, goes the first year and by the second, third year, up to a hundred percent of your eligible population attending the 4K. It's been, been well-received. The biggest concern so far is can we do it in this short timeframe, getting ready for next fall? And the way we need to, to get that and make this the planning, it wouldn't matter if we're doing it for this fall or the fall after that. There are only certain things you can do. You need all the information first and we would be in this timeframe next year at the same time because we have to have enrollees, we have to have a whole period for enrollment and et cetera. We believe we're on schedule. The schools that we talked to, again, they're concerned, but they're very much in favor of it. And we're going to work together to get it done for the fall.
A couple of questions.
Yes.
So this is going to be at a preschool, correct? The sites are at a preschool or...
Yes, no, there are different classifications there, but...
A daycare.
A daycare or preschool.
A daycare preschool, okay.
Right, one or the other.
So an existing facility. What about kids who don't go to daycare or preschool?
There are a couple of things that could happen. If they register, if they live close to the chain school, we would take them to a program at the chain. If they live close to a daycare, the daycare will tell us how many slots they have and we could bus them to the daycare for their class.
Okay.
And then back home again.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any charge or anything, it's just...
No, it would be a site.
Okay.
We're going to, in effect, rent that facility for that period of time, pay for the teacher. We're going to have our program in their facility.
How would you identify kids that aren't enrolled in a daycare or preschool? How would you let their parents know that it's available?
We're putting out, in fact, I met with Bob Cloud on Monday. This Thursday, we have an article in paper with approximate dates for every registration and how people go about that, but we'll also be notifying. We, we know four-year-olds through our four-year-old screening and we've identified those people already. They'll be getting mailings and invitations to come.
Oh, they're screening for five-year-old kindergarten. Will they be screened for four-year-old kindergarten or not?
Uh, they will. And that's one of the advantages that you'll see listed here is that now we can identify kids who have extra needs even earlier.
So they'll be screened at five?
They provide support for those. Will they be screened where?
At three, at the end of, you know...
That I don't know for sure.
I'm just wondering how people, well, if they don't get the paper.
Well, we'll be contacting, we, we want them to enroll, so we'll be...
So you, you know where these kids are?
Yes. Right.
How do you know that?
Through census?
There's a couple of different ways through the census, but Patty Schrader has been working with this for a number of years where she can identify and she has certain people that she calls in the community to locate those kids. There are probably a few that, you know, that may slip through the cracks, but I think for the most part, we have the majority of kids and the location where to find them.
There are people who move in and out at various times and some of those will fall through the cracks, but we'll, we'll get out.
Yeah. Well, I just wondered if you, like, if there's programs, social programs kind of thing that, that involve little kids, organization clinics or, I don't know, I'm just thinking if you put up information at those sites.
We'll do it.
Doctors, collect some, yeah, doctor's offices, I think.
Well, even a sign on the school door because of siblings and...
Right. But those we know for sure, which is, those we got. Which reminds me, Head Start is, will also be a site. Head Start Building has volunteered to be a site. We haven't selected a site yet, but they will offer to be...
Based on participation projections, what do you see as being the likelihood of utilizing either the chain or the WLC?
I think we're going to use WLC for sure. I mean, I think for sure. I would suggest that we're going to use the WLC. I don't know if it'll be the chain or not. We're trying to collect data from these centers that we're offering. Can they have two programs in the morning, two in the afternoon, or is it one in the morning? Some are just saying we'll only do afternoon. Trinity said we'll just have two afternoon programs. We have to fit all those pieces together. But if you break down the numbers right now, it looks like we would have capacity for one at the learning center after morning and afternoon. And if there's overflow from that, we go to the chain.
So we would have to hire a teacher there?
We may have to hire a teacher even for more. Not all of the preschools have their own 4K certified teacher.
Having the presence of the chain school and seeing all the space there, why would we not utilize them as opposed to the WLC?
Because of special needs.
One of, one of the reasons is some of the kids when we identify them at an earlier age might need OTPT and speech and language and maybe some other services that are already located at the WLC.
And what's the cutoff for enrollment, same as school, did you say?
The date, you mean?
The, yeah, turning four by what date? Is it September first or...
I don't know.
I'm not exactly sure.
I'm not sure.
What is the school? Is it still September first for kindergarten? Even though people technically...
I don't think it's the first.
Does it?
I don't think it's...
I think it's October, so.
September first, you have to be one or that, eight by September? September one, yeah. That's what it always is.
It just changed, so I'm not exactly sure.
Because we have to follow that and for our program, it has to be by September first.
So you don't know that it's changed either?
No.
When you find out, you call Betty.
Let us all know.
Let me know if they have, because that'll be interesting.
You think it's October?
I have a school, but I don't know off the top of my head.
I'll find out. If you have, if you have questions, just give me a call or marine or Rhonda a call as, as we move forward. The article in paper will be pretty extensive. We talked about cost and things like that as well. We're looking at the first year because we don't get aided on money until we spend it, so the first year we're spending it, first year we get aided the second year, so there will be a little gap in the startup. But there are some startup funds that are available as well.
It actually works in year two.
In year two.
Startup funds?
Yeah.
I suppose you have to start up first before, but... It will give us more capacity under revenue cap, but that's inconsequential because we already have capacity under revenue cap. But eventually be able to count these kids as point five students as they're half-time and get a state aid at point, point five time. My hope is that over time, this becomes a revenue or an expense control program. Say nothing what it's, how good it is. Yeah, exactly, you're right. And we talked about that in the newspaper as well, for the benefits. I'm going to, the next, it was going to be a report by Weha. We have two people coming from Weha. We'll be here about six fifteen, but obviously. In the meantime, what I'm handing out here is a email that I received from Jack Barry. They asked me to share with board members regarding the program. And for the benefit of those, I think I'll just read it real quick. He says, "I can tell you," Mandy, who would be Mandy Tomlinson, Jeff's daughter, "and the other girls are enjoying Coach Guyer, but it's quite frustrating again for her to have only three others that can really skate and play the game at a level necessary to compete." "Is Weha doing anything to get more girls started in hockey before they're a high school freshman? If not, this program will never improve because they'll always be starting from scratch." "They are one in ten this year. After six in sixteen last year, they lost Tasha Smith to the Madison Catfish." "I still just shake my head at the thought of starting a RC program without any feeder program already in place, unless I'm on a slush." That's from Jack and again, he asked me to share that with you. Now, I do have a report here from Chris Gussmer representing Weha. "In case we're unable to have someone attend, here's a brief update on the program from the head coach. Girls hockey team has experienced much success over the past season and a half. We produced three all-conference players last season. Were competitive in many of the games. During this season, the girls have been working really hard and really have come together as a team. The opportunity to participate for these girls is priceless. We are continuing to improve and are currently in sixth place in the conference. We tied the second-place team last night. One of our girls is the second-leading scorer in the conference with another player seven. There are lots of positives going on with the team. We currently have thirteen participants playing this season. We have two seniors, four juniors, one sophomore and six freshmen." Yes, two seniors, four juniors, one sophomore, six freshmen. "There will be as many as four incoming freshmen for next season, so our numbers look strong. At this time, there are no concerns. We appreciate everything the school district and Weha has done to give all of these girls an opportunity to participate in this extracurricular opportunity. It has been much personal growth, both as athletically and personally." Thank you, Chris Gussmer.
Is Jack talking about a specific group of girls at the middle school level that play in Weha? Because doesn't it turn into a, is it a co-ed team up until...
My, my hope was that they would be, there were two things I wanted to address tonight. One is the feeder program. How has adding girls hockey to high school level increased the feeder program for, because that was one of the purposes of getting it going at the high school so that younger kids saw something at the end of the...
Stick to it.
Right. Right. So that, I don't know, I don't have that information here.
I know that Brett Grams was gonna be here, maybe that cloud out, but, um, he did mention to me that the U-14 program is doing quite well. So, I mean, that's primarily the middle school kids, and maybe lower for some grade school-age kids on the U-14s.
And is that just girls, or is that co-ed team?
That's the girls, that's the girls' team.
Just girls?
Yeah.
I was talking with a grandparent the other day who said, um, the Ring Brett program, which is the entry-level program, is larger than it's ever been, and it's thirty-seven, isn't it? Boys and girls, but it's really, I can just really catch on.
I'd like to mention that with Brett Grams and Jason Levine, Chris and Pam Guzman, they've been real helpful, communicating back and forth, and I think the transitions worked fairly well for the last couple of years. Um, one thing, I like to talk, I have talked to Tim Guyer, who's the coach, and also, Weha's aware of this, is that the conference that we're in, we can compete, I think, fairly well, because a number of those schools are just independent schools, not co-op. The Eagle Rivers, the Lakelands, the Medfords, Tomahawk, Ryanlander and Eagle co-op, Wisconsin Rapids and Stevens Point co-op. Marshville co-ops with multiple schools in their surrounding area. We're co-opping also, however, as a conference, since their conference, the Great Northern Conference, has majority of the schools that are just one-school programs, they're very wary about adding additional schools all the time. And we cooperate now with Manoa, Wyawiga, ourselves, and Iowa. Manoa had one girl last year, she didn't come out this year. They don't anticipate, I think Weha's anticipating no one coming from that program. Wyawiga may have some people that will be interested in wanting to play. So we have a two-year agreement with the WI to co-op with Iowa, Manoa, Amherst, and Wapaka. We may switch and drop Manoa and pick up Wyawiga. But we have to stay within our total enrollment as a co-op group to maintain our acceptance in the Great Northern Conference. So that's just up for discussion with Weha, to see how we can work that out for next year, and communicating to the other schools that are involved.
I saw Tim the other night, and Astronaut was going, and he was really excited, really pleased. Two of the players were there, and they were really excited. They're having a great season, and they play Thursday night here in Wapaka.
I've been to a few games, and I'd like to say that there were a number of girls that went out last year, since it was the first year, to try skating. I see a much improvement by their skills, and they're finding some success this year. They beat Lakeland, as Chris Guzman mentioned, Saturday, and now they tied Antigo, Ryanlander, the co-op team, who's in second in the conference right now. So those girls are starting to show some skill. It takes time to develop the skill. And so I'm pleased with what's going on with the program right now.
How many do we have skating from other districts that are members of the co-op? Except the Manoa person is not, but...
Right now, I think it's one from Iowa. The remainder is from Wapaka, at this point. But we know that there's numbers coming up from Amherst, and we can receive some from Wyawiga. Iowa has a junior right now, if she is, at this point.
So Carl, based on what you're seeing with the program and the numbers coming up, are you pretty well satisfied that we did the right thing and we're moving in the right direction?
Yeah, I think it's in the right direction. I know that Weha's attempting as hard as they can to try to draw more interest at the real lower levels of getting the grade school girls involved. That's gonna be the challenge that they're gonna have three, four, five years down the road.
Are the financial arrangements working out?
Yeah.
They're supplying the personnel at games, and taking in the revenue figures? So we don't have to supply just the one?
Just one supervisor.
Supervisor.
At the event. It's worked well. We haven't had any problems.
They're providing well, there's no problem adding all their supervisors.
They're providing the equipment, and we had one agreement by starting out last year, since we have a five-year agreement with them, is that the uniforms and the equipment that they had to purchase all in one year, we've split that in a five-year time period. So the district paid upfront to cover it, and then they're reimbursing to average it out for the five-year time period.
Well, right on the agenda is two other sport, well, one sport-related, one semi-sport-related items. I think most of you may have seen that the Weha team, one of the students, won the Invitational. So I'm sure they were very delighted with that. I did talk to Coach Christian on that in a few minutes. Then, related to sports, are you still in charge of the concession area during basketball?
For boys?
Is that a yes?
For boys or basketball?
Yeah. I just wanted to tell you that the people that have been working the concession stand have been really good, not that they haven't been in past years, but very accommodating, always a smile, very friendly, and so my compliments to the people that we have staffing there, as well as when I was in the store the other days.
Must be.
Are you working the concession stand? Okay, that would do it for monitoring. Consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I have a question. Under volunteer coach, there's Stuart Johnson reviewing, and it says parliamentary... Parliamentary procedure, what does that mean?
Ms. Herb?
Parliamentary procedure is an upperface speaking contest.
Okay, so it's just...
We were wondering, but now you guys...
Now it makes sense.
You came in and performed for us a few years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it's called.
That does make sense.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
And the reason, there'll be, having some responsibilities with students, so we want them approved as volunteers and go through the volunteer. It is new, it's the first time we've actually approved for this program, so it's not something we've seen before.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen it on there before, that's not right.
We want to make it official. Consent agenda, is there a motion to approve? Sir, second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call. Okay, Kenley?
Yes.
Sandy, are you still here? Okay, we're doing a roll call on the consent. She is there. That's a yes from Sandy. Betty?
Yes.
Connie, Kirsten, Stephen. Which one? Stephen?
Yes.
And Steve.
Yes.
Now, let's roll. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. Thank you, Kenley.